Going to be definitely a money loser. You know, if they're, if they pay somebody to be there to sell concessions and they sell a hundred dollars worth a day, I can't see that there's any profit in there. So, anyway, if the Gators can do with the volunteer labor and get by on markup from good soul, great. Good for them. So, you know, that's something that we need to know about, so.
Or if they want to do it for one, one month of the summer.
Right.
You know, a piece of the summer, because families staffing that, vacations, soon as the championships are over, they all take a vacation because they stayed in town all summer for the kids to swim. So, they may not want the whole summer.
Well, best thing to do about concessions is one, or a possibility with concessions, like me, to, you know, kind of sidestep this whole grease trap sink thing and just kind of correct, not, no, just Donatos or Papa John's or Subway, but, I mean, you know, we've got a restaurant here, of course, we're getting, just getting on restaurants, but if we have a restaurant here that wants to be involved, I mean, just make their home menu available, I mean, how far do they have to go to deliver food? You know, a little delivery charge up, sure they want to do that for the volume.
They love it.
Things can be done.
I'm going to break that.
Are we ready to move on?
Next, I'm here for use in another draft of the fee schedule that we've been talking about, and I will make a couple of changes. Okay, one of the things that I noticed on the commons, we have deposits for gazebo, the marketplace. We also have an hourly charge. On the commons, we have a deposit, but we have no hourly charge, other than we're proposing a ten dollar hour electric charge. So, I, I might suggest that we also do an hourly rate for non-residents. You know, I've heard it's our commons, why charge, but if they're non-residents, would you want to have an hourly rate? You do for other facilities, so I'll just throw that one out. If you're interested in that, we could come up with an hourly rate. The picnic shelter, proposing to add a fifty dollar deposit for resident or member, a one hundred and fifty dollar deposit for non-residents, and a rate of one hundred and fifty for non-residents. But right now, it looks like we don't, oh, excuse me, I read that wrong. Our rates are a hundred for use by non-residents for the rate, and we're proposing a hundred and fifty dollar deposit for both resident and non-resident. Um, the patio, oh, sorry.
Over, in that, in that proposed rate column, you had one fifty plus one fifty. Should I just say one fifty?
Yeah, that's one fifty for both categories.
Hundred and fifty dollar deposit was a hundred and fifty dollar per hour, or just a hundred and fifty dollars?
Because it's a hundred dollar for use, it's a hundred and fifty dollar deposit, that makes sense.
So, picnic shelter is fifty for, by resident, and fifty dollar deposit.
Correct.
And then, non-residents, a hundred dollars for use, plus a hundred and fifty dollar deposit.
Correct.
That's for as long as they want it, it's not by the hour and?
Oh, that is by the hour. It's a hundred dollar per hour, fifty dollars per hour.
Per hour?
All right, well, that's my understanding.
That would seem pretty crazy.
Yeah, that would, actually, because that should be for the, for the event. She should have written it on there, but I do think that's pretty bad, because I don't remember being there.
Should we, should we bracket that event? Just make it like three hour event or four hour event or some kind of? There might be more than one on it.
Yeah.
Twelve hours.
Yeah. I'll think of what's on that.
Call it up to four hour, maybe.
Three to four. This one's probably even a four hour. For four hours.
Fifty dollars per hour for four hours.
No.
Fifty dollars for a four hour.
Up to four hours.
Um, the patio, which is the patio by the baby pool, that's just there for, so you know which patio it is. Again, it, right now, it's twenty five dollars, resident or member, fifty dollars for, for non-resident, and we're proposing deposits on those as well. I, there is, again, a hundred plus one hundred and fifty, I'm not sure why that's?
A hundred for use is probably what the proposal is.
Now, these are deposits that are refundable if there's no breakage or?
Correct.
No, like, chassis to clean up needed, or?
Yes.
And that's all written out for the people who are renting?
Yes. Um, then I heard rate on swimming pool after hours, that, that did say hourly charge. I, I don't know if we've actually been charging that, a hundred and fifty per hour and two hundred and fifty for non-residents. We do really need to revisit that. We should have a deposit, just by virtue of the fact that they might be holding an evening, and somebody else might want to schedule it, so I, I think we need to get a deposit in and, and take a look. Regardless of who does it, I think we do need to look at the hourly cost of the lifeguards, because we're paying that now.
Yes.
Not getting sufficient funding to cover that staffing.
So, that, so what we're charging now on this schedule did not include lifeguards, is that what that means?
It, well, it did not include specific charge for lifeguards, no.
Just a hundred and fifty now.
Right. The middle column is what we're charging right now.
And you're going to check to see if we've got the lifeguards covered, is that what you said?
Well, I, I don't think we do, but I, I think we need to move to that, whether we go with the contractor, whether we do the poor sales. I think we do need to look at a, an hourly charge for the lifeguards.
Yeah.
So, they're all lifeguarders.
That's the cost, that's probably not being covered. Um, let's see, where would we, spoils also include a deposit for non-residents, please? Uh, now, here's a new one. On the apartments, I have our current rates for one day, one two day, one three day. I would like to suggest, right now, we have a four dollar a day late charge, and we really need to bump that up. And I am proposing a twenty five dollar late fee, just for them if you're one day late, uh, then ten days.
Ten dollars each day.
Per day.
Each additional day.
Additional day.
So, if you're late one day, it's thirty five bucks.
Correct. And then ten, yeah, ten dollars.
I, I don't know what's usual with customers, either.
That's outrageous. Well, I think it's an issue for us, I think we should consider it.
Because it forces you to pay the bill, so it's, um?
I'm not supposed to hold the people accountable. I just want to make sure it's within a room of what other people are doing.
I don't know, I'd look into it.
Okay, let's see. We talked the last time about the banner, thirty dollar charge for residents, thirty dollar for non-residents, plus a five dollar a day. Um, next change down under, um, right now, for the daily rate at the pool.
Let me ask you a question on the banner. Do, what do we have up? We've got festival stuff, right? And I'm trying to think what's been up in the last year.
Do Alice Hall's Center, um, any number of things, and I'm not?
Right now, we're not charging anything at all.
They have to pay for the banner, whatever it's enough.
Yeah, right, so.
Yeah, whether you put our, whether you put our banner up, that's the thing. And, um, I mean, it, it seems fair that we ought to be able to cover the cost.
Right.
Of putting it up, taking it down, and a reasonable fee for the equipment. Because it's basically costs money to own and maintain that bike truck. It's got other uses, but that's one of the, you know, one of its primary uses is the, um?
All right, so what you're saying is thirty dollars, we're down five dollars a day.
Uh, that, that's if they're from outside the community.
Right.
A business or resident. And, and the main reason for that, we felt, is that sometimes there can be some, it doesn't happen often, but when it does, there's like two people who both want their banner up. So, you know, like, you know, it's just small, I don't want to look at this as a major revenue stream for us, but it does, in a, for a week.
Right, because usually that banner will be up maybe for more than a week, more than a week, right?
Um, I think it's on for two.
Two weeks, okay.
Do residents get a priority over non-residents? I would say yes. I would agree.
So, where are we on the banners? Thirty dollars for, just to put it up and take it down, and five dollars a day.
For non-residents.
If you're from outside a community.
So, five dollars a day is on? So, thirty dollar, thirty dollars for a resident just covers like a week or two.
Or didn't, right, the cost to put it up, take it down.
Oh, okay. And there's no daily charge?
No daily charge.
Okay.
Okay, next suggestion is under the daily rate for the swimming pool. We have seven dollars for adults, that's your good dollars somewhere. Uh, but then, notice in the current rates, we have all sorts of breakdowns, a dollar, five dollars, six fifty. I'm suggesting that we just go seven dollars for adults, five dollars for, yeah, under eighteen, seventeen or under. Well, currently, we go eleven, seventeen is our highest category, so I, I would just say group all of those and put them at five dollars for daily rate. To make it easier.
Well, I mean, I might put the under twos in there for free.
It'd cost us a lot if we had to have the pool. Sorry, that was my point.
You gotta, you gotta point, you gotta point, okay. Point made.
So, what are we going, uh, seven dollars for adults and, what, under twelve is five, or is that what you said, or under seventeen?
Uh, right, yeah, right now, we have the breakup at seventeen, so.
Yeah, that sounds, uh, less than ten.
I'm trying to think what other ones we haven't discussed yet. Um, here the bottom.
Legal.
I'm sorry.
Oh, he was saying why seventeen, I said legal, because eighteen were legal.
Yeah, I'm kind of thinking Bud's thinking is more of the, I mean, do you, do you charge a fifteen year old adult? I mean, just with other things that cut you off, like kids meal or something like that, twelve and under, ten and over.
Yeah, it seems like I see twelve and under everywhere.
Yeah, you know, I'm kind of thinking high school kids, the, you know, kind of, it's, it's not a huge break, it's two bugs for crying out loud.
That's true.
Actually, they luck add in in this scenario, because they're currently paying six fifty.
And that's what I was thinking, are we going to attract more, or are we cutting off our revenue? With it's only a dollar fifty, but how much is that going to add up to?
Well, unless we have a breakdown of who came and paid daily rates by age, there's really no way to, to ascertain the, the truth of that. You know, so.
You were just trying to simplify.
From a simplification standpoint, I think this, this certainly meets that. It makes it easier to say, um, what's cost pool, seven dollars for adults, seventeen, under five dollars.
Right, you know, it's a little bit more obvious when they come through too, and it's hard to ask for a, I mean, for a, for a, uh?
Fifteen year old, yeah.
Or something, to see if they should be charged a dollar or five dollars, that's a huge grade.
I love the simplification. I think it's fine, like I said, I just, my concern is taking a dollar, but it sounds good.
Okay, I think the only other change I made from the last version is, if you drop down to street company, which is the third one from the bottom, we need to be requiring a bond for this. Doesn't happen often, utilities unfortunately don't, don't fall under this, but we were, we had to repair our street after somebody cut through it. Um, two thousand's a pretty acceptable amount right now, if we got it. This is just something, a bond that you give and hold it until the person completes the work, and if the work's done properly, you can back it.
And the cost of that bond is?
I, I don't know what the cost of bond is.
Three points.
Three percent? Okay, so.
All my contractors need them, and they can do it.
I think the other piece of that, that we need?
So, it's going to cost sixty dollars for somebody to buy a bond?
For small, small little things, when our residents need to maybe cut into the right away a little bit. I, I can't see adding an additional fee for engineering review if it's not even necessary. But again, when you get into the ones that are going to require a debt bond, an engineer does have to take a look at that. So, I, I think we'd be smart to word that the cost of the engineering review would be passed on to that entity as well.
Give me an example of, um?
If somebody's going to put in a new water tap, and they have to cut into the street to get to the water pipe across the street. Something like that. I mean, it's probably not going to happen often, but when it does, it can be risky for us, if our streets not get repaired properly.
In Montgomery, if we're doing an addition, or anybody doing addition, you have to put a thousand dollars down just to make sure that you keep, you get it nice and cleaned up after it's all done, and graded out. Then you develop, because a lot of people are just leaving and not keeping it, keeping it nice and streets nice, you know, that kind of stuff.
Not bad.
Interesting.
And on the code enforcement, again, the schedule to be developed, we do currently have penalties as, you know, first degree, second degree, third degree, fourth degree misdemeanor, so it isn't like we don't have any minimum plus at this point in time.
We wait for NICAs?
Yeah, we probably need to have a committee, I think that was in service, was it, or we didn't? Anyway, where, was, we probably do need to have another committee needing to handle down.
Any recycling business, right, because that's two dollars to them, residential to all.
It's now dollar.
Same topic?
Do you think it too? All right, well, let me know if you have any other thoughts on this, we have to find it, but I'd like to, I don't know. Would we be ready to take this to council or something?
I like her.
Have these, and we can always amend it, anti-rate whatever, and if you have starting point.
No, okay, that's certainly starting, I think we've got sufficient feedback.
Okay. Okay, next item that I have is a, um, I have a caucus double sided, okay? And I felt that you need to see the whole thing, which is why I've covered the entire thing for you. What I have here is a fairly good draft, ready for the, um, from a noise, it's a request for qualifications for the site. Basically, I've worded it, and it take a look at it, and leave that with me with any comments that you may have. Um, I'm referring to it as a banquet facility slash restaurant slash concession. Uh, however, it's written that it's that, it's functioned most as the banquet facility, so we would expect that to be a, a, um, round, as, round the, uh, you know, every month's not round the clock, you know what I mean? Um, all year function, and the restaurants and concession could be seasonal or as otherwise negotiated with the village. I left that a little bit open. I, you know, speaking of concessions, it would be ideal if we could have that operating as concessions for this pool and the golf course and anything else, and that, any other recreation opportunities in that area that can need that, that could function as, as such. Um, I, it still needs a little more work in terms of the discussion on the liquor license that's involved. So, we'll add that in. I thought about putting, having, um, Mr. Horace give us an example, the type of management agreement that has talked about for, for worker license, because I think that's going to be of primary interest to the, um, anybody who's, who will be looking at the site, though, that's just a key element. Um, what I've done is outlined the process that would be followed, and there's going to be an informational meeting in site tomorrow. I have talked to Steve Shamsi, to see if he could be available, whenever we can have that to, um, assist with any questions that we might have about the building or the operation as it has been. Again, please, please read through this and let me know if you do have any, any comments. I, you know, I guess I would say one of the biggest things is, is just do know that, I'm trying to think in what section where we ask, where I ask for, um, they're supposed to give us a breakdown of their fee. It's on page thirteen, financial return to the village, and I'm asking for flat rates, um, but we've always had varying flat rates, and in fact, if they have another structure that they want to propose to us, if, I've left it open, because that would most definitely be something we would negotiate with whoever the select user would be.
Do you have any interested parties right now?
Um, there have been some individuals, but I just told them all, we'll be putting out a, like, two.
Okay.
Looks like you're going for a five year lease.
Um, that's what I put in here, yes, with options to new.
And is there a cancellation or chicken out clause in here somewhere?
Um, I don't know where.
Mm-hmm, oh, here it is, on page eighteen.
Okay, and there, there's certainly will be on the final, on the final agreement as well. This is just to give them a feel, a feeling for what they would, um, you know, give them enough information so they'll be comfortable with what, what's going to be expected of them, but there will be a separate agreement. So, my hope would be to try to get this out, um, in the next couple of weeks, to, you know, we can get back.
When you say get it down, you're touching that.
All right, it, it, yes, it would have to be advertised and issued, put on the website, and, um, simulate your responses.
I know a lot of work's gone into this. I've seen parts of this already before, so, um, I'm glad we're moving forward with this.
It's very thorough, appreciate it.
Um, I noticed you have a mandatory pre-med meeting, which I always think is a good idea. Do you have any wording in here that if somebody doesn't attend the meeting and submits a bid, that that bid will not be considered?
I thought it would be.
It says there's a pre-med meeting, but rather we say that they, that bid won't be considered.
Yeah, I, I, I know there's a statement, I can't recall where it is right off, but there, by virtue of the fact that they submitted, they're verifying, I believe that they have attended that, and that they're familiar with everything that's being expected and required. I'll check it just to make sure they don't pick you up. If they haven't gone through the facility, at least you're fine.
Well, but there's a lot of people who do that, you know, any good job, they'll, they not attend the meeting and just shoot number it. Why is wasting? If I just, to save yourself some time, and just, anyway, you know, send a bid in, you know, they do it. Happens all the time, construction biz and all that for food service. They have a mandatory pre-med meeting, and some guy in Cleveland will just go ahead and send him a bid just off the specs. Now, this is a little different, because you've got, it's like a management thing, an operating thing. Talking about job, where there's equipment specifications and stuff.
Yeah.
But still, I mean, if they need to be here, I think I'd prevent somebody, wait for them to be.
I don't think it'd be a person of interest to us if they didn't show up.
Right. So, would you personally ask to get comments back to them for a period of time?
Yeah, absolutely, especially if you want to, if you want to get it, yeah, I'd say that.
By council team, then, if you have a chance for you to find in?
Oh, yeah.
Other changes or suggestions?
You'll want to have this thing out, and you probably want to hold this meeting in January, I would.
Yes, I think so.
Because anybody, anybody who worked their salt that would be proposing a, a bid would likely be busy too.
Okay, great, and we'll see by council comments, if we're considering.
You might want to have that meeting earlier, because there's a big bridal show downtown for vendors, uh, people for weddings in June, and May, and July, booking six months out. So, if someone takes this, they may want to be out there. So, I don't know how fast we can move, or how fast they can move, but that's another piece, that they need on the building their clientele for summer.
Okay, get it out as soon as possible. Ready?
Next.
Okay, the next item is the, um, shopping center, and actually, I, I've got a couple things, um, I want to talk about here. One item that I'm passing out is really just one page out of, um, a request for qualifications that I'm putting together for shopping center, um, and the RFP, request for proposals that, you know, it gets really needed. Seems to me on, on kind of two sides, we have discussions in planning commission where it seems like it's appropriate, of course, to start getting a sense of, you know, what's the market going to be, what, what is the interest out there for the, um, shopping center. It's also, um, becoming an issue for, it's an important issue for potential funding sources, where it's, they're wanting to know what's, what's, what will become of it, what's the interest, what's the market like? So, um, that's the reason for pursuing, um, some proposals at this point in time, is interest. On this particular piece, what I wanted to do is draw your attention to the, uh, section about midway down, about village design, the quality redevelopment, the shopping center that meets the following objectives. And I've listed six different things, um, and I guess I would just ask that you take a look at those and see what you feel is missing, what you feel, uh, needs to be worded differently, whatever, because that's kind of the basis of the whole thing. Would you like me to do that now?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, those currently include the following, um, that redevelopment would meet the following objectives. Reflects and preserves the historic significance of the Green Hill Shopping Center. Incorporates sustainable elements in its design that demonstrate the pioneering spirit of Green Hills. Develops high quality mixed juices on high profile properties in Green Hills that promote a new urbanism environment, compact, walkable, human oriented. Promotes an active pedestrian and alternate vehicle environment. Pursues opportunities for partnerships with adjoining property owners if partnering results in a diesel project, and incorporates current Green Hills businesses into the redevelopment. So, let me know, think of others that you can, or if I'm right. Um, no, I wanted to fill you in on the track that I'm following right now, um, for possible assistance. The first thing I am working on is an application, um, to be designated, it's, it's called a situational distress designation. Sounds awful. It's based on, um, a number of different factors of your local economy, and that's something that I have to hand up to the state by December first. Um, the reason why I feel this is important is because if you can get this designation, you can apply for funding through the Clean Ohio program without competition. They have a, the Clean Ohio Assistance Fund that, um, if, if you receive this designation, you can just submit your funding, uh, application for funding, if you're eligible and there's funding available, you can receive it.
What kind of, what?
The alternative. Um, I believe that is up to seven hundred and fifty thousand in added assistance account without competition. The alternative to that particular account, if you wouldn't get the situational distress, is, um, just competing through the Clean Ohio program, and then you have to complete, compete with all the other sites that might be applying for funding, and, go ahead.
Okay, well, what are the, what does situational distress mean, what are the criteria for?
It's based on, um, a number of different factors, but it's, it'll be seen on, is our, our dropping income tax revenue, um, for closures, any, anything negative that I can find, I'm incorporating it in the law. There's considerations on why you should consider that we are situational.
Are there any, you know, specific measurable kind of criteria?
Vacancy rate above a certain number.
Sounds about like, well, things are up all over.
It's a letter, and you make your best pitch.
Things are all up next door, so.
Have you done this before?
Yes.
For, in Woodland or Lockland?
Lockland.
Or Dow?
Yes. So, we'll, we'll try it. Um, the beauty that Clean Ohio funds is you can use it for a lot of different things. You can use it for acquisition. You can use it for remediation, you can use it for demolition, um, and any cost that you pay associated with the site within like a two year period, or eligible for, um, match income type, so that's, that's the beauty of that. Um, the second piece is that I'm working on is an application for funding through the Gravers and Sane Port Authority, and that's for assessment money. We already have a phase one for that site, and, uh, now we need a phase two, the remediation action plan. That can be, whatever is found. One of the items that was mentioned in the phase one was a dry cleaner that was on the site. We haven't had an asbestos survey done, but that would be another piece of it that would be done. So, all of those things can qualify you for, for the funding, um, and then, ideally, once that is funded, and I will probably apply for that by February first. Just to give you an ideal time. Um, ideally after that's done, um, we would be able to apply for either Clean Ohio Assistance or the Clean Ohio Fund. We'd take a shot at it, um, see if we could get some money to help us with that. One piece that I do want to mention, um, the board authority piece, that's actually a, uh, the port authority actually hires a contractor to go on a site and do the work. So they require an access agreement with the property owner, and I need to talk to him about that as well.
I mean, as far as board authority, what money is concerned, this is, um, money to develop a, a plan to remediate, to, um, you know, understand the scope of remediation necessary.
Yes.
It's not to actually do the remediation.
Right, no, it's not, it's just the plan. Correct. And, and that's why it's helpful to know, or have some idea at least, of what, what might follow in terms of the redevelopment. Because the remediation action plan can reflect that.
Alright.
Okay, well, that's what I'm trying for right now, just want to.
So you're gonna, you're gonna do the, if that's for redevelopment, I mean, after, after we have something to do it, so.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Well, we had two things, first thing we talked about was, um, some, uh, a search for a developer. And then we talked about some money we can get for acquisition through different sources. So we're gonna do the development search after.
Uh, now, actually, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and start that a, as we're proceeding, as we're pursuing the other ones as well. Uh, you know, I, I guess what I found is that the phase one, phase two, the more environmental work you can get done, the more questions you can answer for developers, the more comfortable they are with doing the project, so.
Gotcha, yeah.
And there might not be other incentives that we'll be able to offer them, they may end up paying to buy the site themselves, you know, you never know. So anything, my thinking is that anything we can get done for them in a given time just puts us one step closer to reality. And they would want to know, they would want to know what kinds of programs are, you know, trying to bring into play and make this all more real. They're, they're very much an important element of, of what you're looking for.
I'm amazed there's anybody out there that would be interested in talking to us about redeveloping something we don't own.
But we will have an access agreement for this piece with, um, the current property owner. And whatever else we might need, we'll simply have to negotiate it and work it out. Lots of pieces to puzzle.
If she doesn't have to run a swimming pool, she'd have more time to do this.
You know, it makes sense, what she's trying to do is just, since we're out of that ballgame, whatever happened here, the year the emperor was, the year the emperor? Getting a developer in here to try to squeeze him out, I don't think he wants to do that. I really don't. I really don't think he wants to get out.
He does, he said that to me.
But he.
He said.
Yeah. So I think if we can go, I think it's a good idea. I mean, like you said, we have to, we have to pursue something that's, that's great.
Well, it's all going to come back to somebody, uh, hey, what do you think's the one?
Maybe.
Maybe, maybe not.
What, you know, what's going to get for it, so. Alright, so anything else? White Green Hills is coming up soon.
It is. I've got stuff going all over the place on that now, I forgot it going on.
So you just need everybody to show up, huh? Six thirty, six o'clock, six o'clock, okay.
December second.
December second, six o'clock, fair enough.
I'd like to have an executive session at the next meeting.
At the, uh, December meeting, okay. Clerk, get with the clerk about the details so I can get.
I'll do that.
Appropriately inserted into the agenda. Okay, well, it sounds like a mess for the, uh, December meeting. Very well, if there's nothing else. Anything else?
I would like to see if we can get a traffic safety committee meeting for the thirtieth.
Of this month?
Of this month. Yvonne, can that work on your calendar? As far as I know. I'm glad that's okay, I will check with the chiefs.
Three P M?
Yeah.
Very well. Alright. Anything, if you've got, bring it up.
Hey, tomorrow, three o'clock, safe.
It's been, it's been noticed already.
It's been.
There was a change in recreation commission meeting the seventh of December.
Eight, seven o'clock?
Yeah.
Eight P M. Griggs and eight P M, not got.
No, no.
No, he's not.
No.
Alright, fair enough. Um, if there's nothing else, if there's any objections, adjourn. There's no objection, we are adjourned. Ma'am?
Savannah's, Savannah's something to think about, or is it manhouse? Manhouse, that's in Mesa. Yeah, it's just, it's just up to the.
I hope it's called, and it's going to be a puddle by the next accident.
My walking into the camera.